To the Harwich zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing via remote access. This Wednesday, September 30th, 2020, we open at 7:00 P. M. I now have to read the Governor's Open Meeting Statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law GLC 30A Section 18 and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 Order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Harwich Board of Appeals on Wednesday, September 30th, 2020 at 7:00 P. M. is being conducted via remote participation. No person, I'm sorry, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. If anyone is having trouble connecting, can't see us but can hear us, you can go to the Board of Appeals page on the Town of Harwich website and click on the link that's on the agenda there to get to this location. Okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, that's, uh, this is, is being recorded. I, I don't know if everybody realizes that, but it's being recorded, videotaped, and it will be posted on the Town of Harwich's Channel 18 YouTube site tomorrow or the next day. Okay, we will have our acting clerk, oh, no, I'm sorry, first I have to have the board members introduce themselves. I'm Dave Ryer, Chair. Al?
Alexander Donahue.
Jamie.
James Armstrong.
Ryan.
Brian Sullivan.
Chris.
Chris Murphy.
I'm Shayla.
Shayla Delaney, Secretary.
Okay, our acting clerk is Mr. Armstrong tonight. If you could please call our first case, Jamie.
Certainly, this, uh, this is case number 2020-35, and forgive me if I mispronounce your, uh, your name. Donald R. De Vorey Jr. has applied for a special permit to add a second-floor office and bath that will increase habitable space to a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, subsection 325-54 and Table 2, Area Regulations as set forth in Mass. General, Chapter 40A, Subsection 6. The property is located at 1639 Orleans Road, MAP 107, Parcel G5-1A in the RH1 zoning District.
Okay, thank you. Do we have the applicant or representative here?
Hi, I'm online, yes.
Okay, if you could present your petition to us, please, sir. Introduce yourself and go ahead with your presentation.
Hi, my name is Don De Vorey, and I live at 1639 Orleans Road in Harwich. And I'm not, not going to change the footprint of the house at all, I just wanted to add a bathroom on the second floor and make the attic space above the existing kitchen, which is on the first floor, raise the ridge line on the roof and make that a usable room. It's about 170 square feet, 160 square feet up there that's not being used at all right now. And just make my life much simpler to not have to go downstairs and have facilities
Hey, anything further?
Uh, not if I'm, I am going to, I intend to make the house more energy efficient and replace the existing roof shingles, get the house back in good order, or in better order. It's in, there's no leaks right now, but the intention is to bring things up to date, upgrade the electrical system upstairs and, and that, and those two new rooms. And I recently put a generator on the house last year and a half ago. So trying to just bring things up to date.
Okay, uh, what will be the maximum height when you raise the roof?
Uh, it's not gonna go beyond the existing, uh, the original house was a three-quarter cape, uh, I believe it's a three-quarter cape, and that ridge line is going to be at, it's not gonna change, it's gonna be the same, the new ridge line that runs perpendicular into the original house will be at that same elevation, it won't be any higher. I believe that's around 20, I wanna say 26 feet.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe a little bit under that, actually.
And I think you're gonna put an office, did I see that in the plans also?
That's, yeah, the, that office space will be directly above the existing kitchen on the, on the first floor.
Just a home office, or is it gonna be a commercial office?
No, just a, my home office.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's all that I have. Mr. Donahue?
I have no questions regarding.
I lost my audio.
Okay, uh, Mr. Armstrong?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sullivan?
I'm basically looking at the site plan, not that, uh, I don't really have any questions, but you're, you're putting in a new septic system as well, or is that, was that already done previously?
No, the, there's a, the septic system was changed in 2005 in conformance with the title requirements at that time, and it was a four-bedroom system that was installed. The house currently is a, a three-bedroom home.
I don't have any other questions, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Questions?
Questions. Is there anybody in the public that's on, that would like to, uh, make a comment on No, hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Sullivan, can I have a second, please? Second, Mr. Murphy, I'm all in favor of closing the public hearing. Giving us feedback here, I don't know who.
Not like someone may be driving, it almost sounds like it's a, a bend or something.
I'll turn my sound off, maybe that'll change things.
Okay, um, in looking at the, uh, the petition, it seems to me that it meets the requirements of the bylaw and also the Gale case. The addition is going to, uh, I guess create a new nonconformity, but it's certainly not, I'm sorry, it's going to intensify an existing nonconformity and will not create a new nonconformity, and it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. I do think we need the construction time restriction, and then we'd have to read in our general condition that Town Council has asked us to put into all of our decisions where we have a condition. Unless, Mr. De Vorey, can you, um, get all of the vehicles, the construction vehicles, onto your property?
I, yeah, I certainly could. It wouldn't, nobody, nobody would need to be parked on the street or on the, you know, off the side of the road, everybody could fit on the property very conveniently. Uh, I don't plan on having, I think at the most there'll be probably three vehicles here at full capacity, including, well, my two vehicles and then possibly three other vehicles during the, the daytime hours of, say, Monday through Friday, eight to four. Other than that, there's not gonna be any vehicles left here over the weekend, and nobody will be infringing on anybody else or parking excess vehicles here. There may, there'll be, there'll be a dumpster on-site probably for two and a half to three weeks, at least that's my hope.
Okay, well, normally, we would impose a condition that you could not do demolition, exterior, construction, or new landscape during the period from June 30th to Labor Day in any year, but if you can get the, all the vehicles off the roads onto your property, I'm happy to make that the condition.
Uh, the hope, uh, I'm sorry, the, the hope would be that this would happen certainly before Memorial Day of 2021, so I don't, I don't see any, any conflict with time from, uh, for next summer.
Okay, any comments from the board?
Uh, from expecting the property, there's plenty of room for him to have a handful of trucks, you know, on, on the property for construction, so I don't, I don't think we need to impose restrictions as long as he realizes he's gotta keep all the vehicles on-site after a month.
Want the condition that vehicles all on the property. Uh, any more comments from the board? All right, I'll make a motion that in case 2020-35, Donald R. De Vorey Jr. be granted a special permit to add a second-floor office and bath that will increase habitable space to a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-54 and Table 2, Area Regulations that set forth in MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 1639 Orleans Road, MAP 107, Parcel G5-1A in the RH1 zoning District with the conditions, one, that all construction vehicles and, uh, equipment and ancillary construction items be located on the property at 1639 Orleans Road and not be parked in the, um, the public streets, and, two, a further condition, it is a condition of this grant that a violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Harwich zoning bylaw pursuant to GL, Chapter 40A, Section 7, and the Harwich zoning bylaws, these may be amended from time to time. Can I have a second on that motion, please? Second to Mr. Donahue, um, discussion by the board, any comments, discussion? No? All in favor of granting a special permit?
I, I.
I, 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 okay, special permit is granted to you, Mr. De Vorey unanimously, unanimously. Uh, thank you for making.
Thank, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, good luck with your project.
All right, thank you, stay safe.
Thank you. I authorize, uh, Ms. Delaney to stamp all of the documents submitted in this case, and in each case, if I forget to do it after each particular case, but, um, I authorize her to stamp all of the documents that have been submitted. Hey, Jamie, if you could call our.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Uh, this is case number 2020-36, Joseph, um, Delory Edall and Joanne Murnan, through their agent attorney, William Kroll, have applied for a variance for the requirements of subsection 325-18R to construct a four-foot-high septic retaining wall within the northern setback line, and if necessary, a variance from the requirements of subsection 325-17 of the bylaw for the four-foot height of the septic wall. The application pursuant to the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Subsection 10, the property is located at 113 Brooks Road, MAP 12, Parcel L4 in the RH1 and CH1 zoning districts.
Okay, Attorney Kroll, if you could introduce yourself for the record, please, and present your petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Attorney William Kroll from Harwich Port, uh, representing Joseph Delory this evening, um, as well as, uh, Joanne Murnane. Uh, Mr. Delory is, uh, on your screen this, this evening, um, as well as Dan Crotto from Moran Engineering, so they all will be participating. This is not your average, um, uh, Gale case, um, renovation of a, of a single-family dwelling. This is an interesting case, um, as far as I'm concerned, because it's down, uh, in, by Jake Rooney's in Harwich Port, and Hoyden Street, Brooks Road, um, there's a lot of water table issues down there, there's a lot of mounted septic systems there already, and, um, this petition comes about because, um, the owner has four existing cesspools that are shown on the plan on the northwest side of the lot, little dotted circles, and it would be in, let's say, everybody's best interest, I think, to have him upgrade those four cesspools to a Title V septic system. Uh, the problem is the water table and the existing conditions on the lot, both topographical and structural, uh, so you'll see the, um, the proposed septic tanks, uh, tank is on the northeast side of the lot, um, towards Nahoyden Street, and then the, I'm gonna call it the soil absorption system, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but, um, SAS system or leaching system is in dark, um, print, uh, and it's the big square that's at the corner of Brooks Road, towards the corner of Brooks Road and Nahoyden Street. The water table, that is pushed up, so that, that needs to be, um, four feet above the road grade. They've tried to position this, uh, as best they can in the northeast corner because, um, in the southeast corner, you have the existing garage and a deck, um, southwest corner, you have the water meter pit and a water line, as well as a, a shared driveway with the butter, so, and a deck, again, so that all of that, um, forces the location of this soil absorption system to the northwest corner of the lot. The Conservation Commission, because there's wetland in the area, the Conservation Committee, they've already been to and received the approval of the location of this system by the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health, so you're the last step in the process here, but they've all, they've both, both of those boards have previously given their blessing to this, and it's more or less trying to make the best of a difficult situation, uh, because of the water table and, and the location of the, um, dwelling and, and all of the other pertinences that I just mentioned, um, on the lot, so that the retaining wall, the square retaining wall around the soil absorption system will be four feet, um, above road grade, and it will be five feet from the boundary line. Interesting that it's 10 feet from the edge of the traveled way, but it's five feet from the boundary line, and we have a bylaw, and I know there was a case about it, um, previously, but the bylaw says, um, 325-18, that you're supposed to be 10 feet from any lot line with a retaining wall, so we're seeking a variance of five feet from that bylaw because of all of the unique circumstances pertaining to this lot, but also because it is 10 feet from the edge of the traveled way, um, as a practical matter. So, it's the petitioner's contention in seeking a variance of five feet, um, from that requirement, that there are unique soil conditions because of the high water table, um, there are unique, um, topographical conditions, um, again, because of, of the water table, but also, um, structures on the lot, which the board, this board has taken into account in the past, the location of septic systems and so forth, that, uh, force more or less the, the positioning of, um, whatever structure is seeking relief, um, uh, from this board. There are many other mounted syst- septic systems in the immediate area, as Mr. Crotto can, um, validate, uh, and we have the existence of, existence of wetlands and a high water table in the area, so, in the immediate area, so that, the contention is there are unique, um, soil conditions and topographical con- conditions that create a hardship for Mr. Delory because he wants to upgrade his septic system to a Title V system, but cannot do that, uh, without this variance, and a literal enforcement of this bylaw would cause him to have that hardship, and it's his contention that a variance could be granted without substantial, uh, without detriment to the public good and without substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw, um, due to the fact that there are other existing mounted systems in the immediate area, some of them, it's, it's hard to see because they've, um, very creatively, um, made the side yards look like they're a hill, or they're, and they've landscaped them and, and, and put flowers and other, um, items on them to, to disguise them, but there's a lot of, uh, other mounted systems in the immediate area, um, and that the public good would be served by having a new Title V septic system as opposed to four cesspools. So, that's our argument as far as 325-18 is concerned. 325-17, um, basically says that if you have, um, uh, a structure that, that would, in your opinion, obstruct the view of motorists, um, then it's not supposed to be more than three feet of height. It's our contention, as I set forth in my narrative, that this structure would not obstruct the view of motorists, first of all. Why? Because, um, when you're emerging from Nahoyden Street onto Brooks Road, as shown on the plan, you'd be driving out where it says Nahoyden Street towards Brooks Road, uh, parallel to the retaining wall on the soil absorption system, uh, and there's a stop sign there, so you'd have to come to a stop, you'd go past that structure, that retaining wall, and you'd be able to see beyond it, see to your left to see if there's any traffic coming from the south on Brooks Road, so your view would not be blocked, you would not have to look over the retaining wall, you'd be past it, stopped at the stop sign, and then emerge onto Brooks Road, and you'd have a clear view. If you are traveling on Brooks Road, um, either way, you'd be, but especially coming from the south, going towards Route 28, a car would have to be stopped at the stop sign in Nahoyden Street beyond the four-foot retaining wall, and again, your view, view would not be obstructed, you'd be able to see that car that was stopped at the stop sign. So it's our contention that this, or, this structure four feet in height would not obstruct the view of motorists. If the board does not agree with that analysis, then we're asking for a variance from that requirement so that we could have a four-foot-high retaining wall, and my argument would be the same as I just set forth, or, or articulated, um, for the, um, requirement that we'd be 10 feet from the boundary line, it would be all the same arguments, I'm assuming you don't want me to repeat all of that again, um, with regard to this, um, situation. So, we're seeking a variance from the 10-foot requirement, we contend that, that we don't obstruct the view of motorists under Section 17, but if you think that we do, or wanna play it safe and grant us a variance anyway, hopefully, then, um, we're asking for a variance from that, um, three-foot, uh, height requirement, and, uh, ask that you grant that relief as requested this evening, thank you.
Uh, there, there were four surveyor stakes on the lot there, was that, were they in the location where this, uh, raised structure will be?
Uh, Dan Crotto from Moran Engineering, uh, yes, we had staked it out, um, so you could see, see the position of the wall. Um, I'm gonna say a few things, this, this is, we've done many, um, septic walls, they did, taking the new environmental regulations on these old, these old lots, a lot of times you're running into variances, so we're routinely going to the Board of Health for variances, and, um, this will be the first time coming to the board under the, it's, it's a pretty recent, um, regulation of these retaining walls within 10 feet of the, of the sideline, needing Board of Appeals approval. Um, the, we routinely get septic systems to five feet from lot lines, and the state, the state actually, Title V requires the setback on the lot line to be the first variance asked for before going to, to a, um, too closely to a building with a, with a leaching area. Uh, there are, on the plan that I submitted, the next property to the east, um, it shows where their retaining wall is, and it's right up against the lot line. I think I had given Bill the worst-case scenario with the four feet above the road, it's, it's three to four feet, and in one place it may be four feet. I spoke with, um, Joe Delory, who's on the line too, about, about the, um, about the project, um, in saying that as part of approval of this, that the trees, that the, the cedar tree that are there, which are, which are currently blocking the view there, they would have to be trimmed by the town's regulation up to six feet, so you would have a view, a much better view than currently exists there when this project is completed. Um, so the, uh, just looking at the quick engineering of the site distance, it's the, using the astrolabe, it would be 115 feet of site distance if you park at Nahoyden Street, the, the site distance, stopping site distance would be from, um, you know, as Bill had said, from Brooks Road heading north, and you have far over the requirement of 115 feet once the, um, once the tree is trimmed up to six feet, that the tree and the bush are trimmed up to six feet, like the town, um, requirement states, so I, I think is, um, so getting back to the quick question, Dave, yes, those were, those were the stakes there that I put in place for, um, for the owners to see and for the board to be able to, um, to view, and we had, um, gone to Board of Health and Conservation, and they both wanted the system out in this location because we meet the 100 feet from the septics, the, um, we, from the wetland to the, uh, south, southeast. The tanks themselves are, have no choice but to be out, um, within 100 feet of the wetland because that's where the existing sewers are and existing cesspools, uh, existing cesspools are probably ingrown water, so this will be a huge improvement environmental-wise. Um, and if you drive down Nahoyden Street and Woodbine Road and those other little roads around there, you can see people that have gone through the same, same, um, process as Joe has gone through, and, and, um, I don't think at that time, they didn't have to go through the board, but I think it is, it's obviously a good, uh, the more eyes on, on projects like this, the better, so it's, it's a fine regulation that we have to go through now.
Okay, thank you. The stakes were helpful in visualizing what it was gonna look like on the ground, I, I assume that's where it was, and you confirmed that. Um, Al, any questions? You gotta unmute yourself there.
I think when I was there, I maybe Mr. Delory I had spoken with, and, um, it sounds as I was.
I think when I was there, I maybe Mr. Delory had spoken with, and it sounds as though this septic system, which is being built, would be a vast improvement to the current situation. And not mistaken, and I think was mentioned by Mr. Kroll, the property directly behind that, to his rear, that has a wall adjacent to the bushes that they have there, so I'm assuming that too is an elevated septic system. The only question I have is with regard to the tree that is closest to Rook Street at Nahoyden. I couldn't quite tell if it would impact the line of view if it was allowed to grow to the fullest extent, or assuming that they're going to be trimmed, but that's a question, I think.
Can I answer that question?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Delory.
Yeah, I've talked with F.L. Quinn, Florrie Quinn, and the proposal that he put out stipulates that he will take care of all the trees. He didn't think that bush would, 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 would be a good idea there anyways with the wall there. So in his proposal that I've committed to, he plans on taking those trees down, the ones on Nahoyden that are there, as well as that bush that Dan was speaking of, and that's in the contract.
Oh, thank you. Brian.
Oh, thank you. My question was a tree situation looking at the lot. I don't think there'd be a problem with site view, you know, for, for traffic, so I have no other further questions. Oh, one question, what's your timeframe?
I've been at this for about, for over a year. I talked with, with Florrie to see when he would be able to start it. It's my understanding we have another 30 days after tonight to see if anybody wants to appeal it, then you file for a permit. I'm all for putting it in ASAP. He mentioned sometime in November, December, he assured me that they'll be able to do it right up until sometimes the first of the year, depending on the weather. So I'm, I'm, I'm ready to move, I have the money in place. I'm ready to move on it ASAP.
All right, thank you.
Amy.
I, I don't believe it's going to be a traffic problem at all. It seems certainly far enough away from the intersection. And also, I, I certainly believe that upgrading a, a septic system, particularly in a wetland, is, is a good thing for the community, so I'm in favor of the project. No questions.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, certainly there's no other place to put it. I mean, it's pretty congested property, and a lot of the other area homes have these. I drove down the Nahoyden Street and there are probably four or five that I saw down, some are mounted, some have walls, it was pretty clear. And I was surprised how busy that street was midday, midweek. But even then, people coming out and into that intersection, that thing should pose no problem with visibility. I don't see any issues there. The trees that you pointed out, Dan, were the really main problem getting out of that intersection, so if they get trimmed, that, that's, would help a lot. Question I did have, the one question is, you mentioned four feet is the height, now you said maximum four feet. It looked like a lot of the other systems there were only a couple of feet tall, maybe, and maybe I was just estimating it. This four feet, that's just a requirement, it must be X amount of feet above the water table? Is that the reason the four feet was?
Yes, the bottom of the leach area needs to be five feet above high groundwater, so there's no variance in that. Some of this, this, that's a regulation that changed in 95, so anything before 95 would have been four feet, that would have been a foot lower. And other than that, it would be the, the grade of the land is actually, you know, half a foot, a foot higher, and that would make the wall. The groundwater itself shouldn't vary much on Nahoyden Streets, it should all be within half a foot or a foot. But you're, if you're seeing shorter walls, it's either due to a different regu, or older regulation, or the, the ground is higher, it's just higher above sea level. It doesn't have to be, you know, it's a foot higher than, than your wall's going to look that foot lower, or that's a wall on the ground would be a foot lower.
Yeah, this obviously is a, could be a big improvement over the existing system that's, that's there, so, and it doesn't have any safety issues far as obstructing views, so yeah, I have no problem with this plan.
Yeah, I don't think it, that 325-17 is really impacted by this structure that's going to be erected here. I think there's good lines of sight there, Attorney Kroll, I don't think we need to address that other than maybe that the board feels it's not necessary to grant a variance because there will be no line of sight at that point, line of sight at that point.
I agree. If you could make a decision, Mr. Chairman, that would be good.
Okay, I think the requirements for variance are met here in this case. And as the board members have pointed out, I think it's going to be a beneficial improvement to get rid of the septic tanks. I'm sorry, not septic tanks, the, what are they, cisterns?
Cesspools.
The cesspools and put in a Title V system. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this application? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Who moved? Mr. Armstrong, a second. Mr. Murphy, second. Any discussion? No, all in favor on closing the public hearing? Aye. Hearing is closed, unanimous. I do think we should put our conditions in, they're not going to be applicable. Mr. Delory said he's going to move forward, but sometimes we have found things happen, so I, I think we'll put it in just to be safe. And I'll make a motion that in case 2020-36, Joseph M. Delory et al. and Joanne Murnane, be granted a variance from the requirements of Section 325-18 are to construct a four-foot-high septic retaining wall within the northern setback line. The application is pursuant to the requirements of MGL Chapter 48, Section 10. The property is located at 113 Brooks Road, Map 12, Parcel L4 in the RH1 and CH1 zoning districts. The board is granting this variance because it is determined that the shape and topography of the land and existing structures and just the general wetlands setback and the high water table impacting the site justifies the granting of a variance in this case, and that if the applicants cannot instruct a septic system complying with Title V, they would suffer the requisite financial hardship. The granting of the variance would not be detrimental to the public good or nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The board also founds that because of the lines of sight resulting from this project, there will be no adverse impact on visibility and therefore Section 325-17 will not be impacted, and there's no need for the board to grant relief with respect to that particular section of the bylaw. All right, subject to the conditions, that, one, there shall be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping through the period from 30th to Labor Day in any year, and two, it is a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of this variance may be enforced as a violation of the Harwich zoning bylaw pursuant to GL Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Harwich zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time. Would I have a second on that motion, please?
I'll second it.
Hey, that was, I think, Mr. Donahue, was it?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion by the board, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, variance granted unanimously with the two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Kroll, thank you, Dan, thank you, everybody.
You're welcome, Joe. To all.
Hey, Joe, hey, Dan.
I have, I have one question, please.
Sure.
When, how soon can we file for a permit on this?
Taylor.
I need to write the decision within 14 days, then it goes to the clerk's office, and it has to sit for 20 days. And you can't apply until the 20-day period is out, I sent a letter to that effect, once your decision is filed with the clerk's office, and it will have some information. Generally, I send those to your attorney, I can do it to both of you so that you can have that information simultaneously. And, and so then, once you are able to get the attested decision from the clerk's office, bring it to the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds for stamping, then you can reapply for the building.
Gotcha. So we're probably looking at the first of, the first of November, somewhere along near there?
At least.
Okay.
Yeah. Record that, Joe, I will record, I'll get that and record that at the Registry of Deeds.
Great, thank you very much, thank you all very, very much.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Delory.
Al, good evening.
In case 2020-36, I authorize Ms. Delaney to stamp all of the submitted documents on behalf of the board. And Jamie, if you could call our next case, please.
Certainly, this next case is case number 2020-37. Claire and Thomas McCabe and Elaine Sweeney, through their agent, Attorney William Kroll, have applied for a special permit, or in the alternative, a variance to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, subsection 325-54.5 and Table 2, Area Regulations, as set forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Subsections 6. The property is located at, by Grayneck Lane, Map 11, Parcel X8-6, in the RH1 zoning district.
Hey, Attorney Kroll, if you could present your application, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Kroll from Howard's Foot, representing the petitioners concerning this matter, and I just want to get the plan in front of me. The McCabe's could not attend this evening, nor could their builder, Rick Roy, so I'm all you get tonight on this one. I'm trying to make it short and sweet. The petitioners are seeking to, a special permit to demolish and replace the existing single-family residence at 25 Grayneck Lane. As you can see from the plot plan, and this is another petition in the south of Lower County Road, West Harwich area, that seems to be a hot district right now. The, the primary area of concern, I would think, would be the southwest corner, and you can see that the existing dwelling is 6.9 feet, and we're going to pull that back to be 7.4 feet. It's going to be more conforming, be better. I also gave Shayla a copy of the, a small revision to the plan, which hopefully you all saw, that shows a bulkhead on that southeast corner, and that also will be 7.4 feet from the southwesterly lot line, but we wanted to have that stamped in as part of the petition this evening, if the board grants the special permit. There are existing nonconformities as far as setbacks on all four sides here, so that you can see that we're 19.9 feet from the northerly lot line, we're 14, and, and we won't come any closer than that. We're 14 feet from the easterly lot line, we won't come any closer than that. The deck on the southerly lot line is 17.9, we're going to make that into a conforming situation now at 21.2. So again, we're, we're making it better. The existing and proposed building coverage and site coverages will both be under the required maximums. And as a result of demolishing, replacing, and, and putting somewhat more habitable space along the southwesterly setback of 20 feet, we are intensifying an existing nonconformity under the Gale case. So I think we meet the requirements of that, and our intention is that we would not, the, the new house would not, would not result in a substantial increase in noise, traffic, fumes, or odors, congestion, or the like, and there would be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood as a result of this. A couple of parenthetical comments. The petitioners did obtain a special permit for this property a, a year or so ago from this board to do bumpouts and renovations with, with Rick Roy Construction. And then when they really got down to it, and Rick went through it all with them, his, his opinion was it would be cost-prohibitive to make the renovations as opposed to build a new house. He said it actually would be cheaper to build a new house, and I hear that a lot from builders. So that's why we're back, that's why the petitions are back now, saying we want to demolish and replace, it'll cost less money to build a new house, and then we'd like to have a second floor on it as per the building plans that were submitted. They also have previously been to the Conservation Commission for this new footprint, and, and Conservation has approved it, as shown on the plan. Shayla, I did also late today send you a copy of the basement plan that will show the new bulkhead. When I sent you the revised plot plan, I did not send you the basement plan, so you'll see that tomorrow. So if that could be stamped in, if they grant the special permit, could stamp in that new basement plan, it would be consistent with the bulkhead shown on the revised certified plot plan. Again, we asked that pursuant to the terms of the Gale case, that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Attorney Kroll. What's the maximum height? I can't read it on the, the plan I printed here, it's too small.
It would be 30 feet.
Right at 30?
No, no, yeah, I, I thought you were asking, what's the maximum height in that district? It's 30 feet.
No, no, what's the maximum height of?
It's 20, it's showing 22.3, Dave.
Okay. Okay, thanks, I just couldn't read it.
Okay.
Al, any questions, comments?
No, I have the same question, I had a difficult time reading the height of the property. Beyond that, I have no further questions.
Brian.
Oh, do you go with, Attorney, in the basement, where's, there's, there's a big section where the stairway goes down into it, is this a whole new foundation that's being put in? Are they, are they building on the existing foundation?
No, the, the, the Plan A3 that was submitted and that's been revised to show the bulkhead is the proposed foundation plan.
Okay, so it's a new foundation?
Yes, that's my reading of it.
Question, there's, on the right-hand side, it's, it says, or it says a dust cover to garage and so forth. Is that a crawl space there, or is this strictly going to be? Because it just shows no access into that area, so I'm assuming it's not a crawl space.
Which plan are you looking at, Mr. Sullivan?
Just, uh, I was looking at page three of the revised plan that Shayla sent out.
Of the building and elevation plans?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And my print on that is very small also. So I'm trying to use my magnifying glass to understand what you're asking.
Just on the foundation, there's two sections. And I didn't, I was just wondering that right-hand side, if that's a, if that's a crawl space or strictly just a--
It says dust cover to grade.
Okay.
Three feet, eight inches. And I can't read the word. Yeah, a pore, three foot, eight inch pore.
Okay. And if it's a crawl space, there's no access to get into the main, main part of the basement. I guess you're supposed to have, if a crawl space, you need access from the main, main area. That's all.
That's beyond what I can answer on that this evening.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Just pointing that out. Other than that, I don't have any other questions.
If, if that's a, a problem, I would think that the building inspector would raise that if it doesn't meet code. I'm good, I've, over the years, been sent into many crawl spaces, but I haven't worried about whether they had access to the main foundation or not.
Jamie.
I too have been in many crawl spaces over the years.
When nobody else will do it, then you get asked to do it, right?
That's, that's true. Well, having worked on the fire department, I have no questions, thank you.
I have no questions.
Okay, I think this case meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale case. I think the proposal does intensify the existing nonconformity, does not create any new nonconformity, and it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this case? Hearing no one, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Murphy, second? I'll second it, okay. Public, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. And I do think we want our construction condition in here, given the tightness of that neighborhood, that street there. Okay, I will move that in case 2020-37, Claire and Thomas McCabe and Elaine Sweeney be granted a special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, section 325-54.5 and Table 2, Area Regulations as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 25 Grayneck Lane, map 11, parcel X8-6 in the RH1 zoning district. Subject to the following conditions. One, that there shall be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping during the period from June 30 to Labor Day in any year. That it is a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Harwich zoning bylaw pursuant to General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7 in the Harwich zoning bylaw as these may be amended from time to time. Can I have a second on that motion, please? Mr. Armstrong? Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, special permit is granted unanimously, Attorney Crowell.
Thank you very much, folks. It's always a pleasure to, to come before you.
Okay, thank you, have a great one.
You too, thanks.
Thank you. Oh, and in that case, Shayla, I authorize you to stamp in all the documents on behalf of the board. You?
No, I'm just trying to figure out how to get myself out of this.
Oh. I'm blocking your computer.
You can't leave.
That's right.
I think you can just click off, but let's see.
Sign in, you're stuck.
It says you have punishment. What's that?
You're just paused.
Yeah.
You can drop down under Go to Meeting. There should be a little arrow dropped down and it says exit. There you go.
Okay, I dismissed him. Are you still there, Kayla?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah. I had a button that said dismiss William Crowell. I hit it and he went away. Okay.
If only we could do that in other cases.
It's good to be King Dave.
Such is the power of the chairmanship.
What's that? Sorry. Yeah, uh, neither Chris nor Brian have yet been interviewed by somebody from the Board of Selectmen. Don Howell had either a knee or a hip replacement. So he had, he told me he had asked Ed McManus to do that and Ed hadn't, so I asked him to remind Ed. And I don't know whether he did or did not, but it hasn't happened. So I sent him another email today. And, you know, it is getting embarrassing to, you know, have the meeting every month to tell Chris and Brian that I've asked the selectmen to get on this and it's happened, so.
They were, they were both at Town Hall today, so they both seem healthy enough to do that.
All right, it appears that Chris and I are showing up every week, so I don't think this is a big issue for me or him.
No, well, hopefully he's godless. I've got to go before the full board in November. If it's not resolved by then, I'm going to bring it up to the full board and see what's going on. I mean, Kathy resigned, I don't know when, was it back in May or June? So it's--
Oh, if it already happens, more like March.
We've got a pandemic, but even so, should be resolved.
Dave, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Regarding our case, uh, third, number 36, it cited 325-18-R in parentheses.
Yes.
I don't find 18-R.
Okay, when they cite that, he obviously found it, he's more up than we are. You have to go on to the, um, our website, our webpage on the Town of Harwich webpage. You go under Boards, you get Board of Appeals, and there's a reference to the zoning code. And that has the absolute latest. Ours doesn't contain all of the more recent provisions. Remember last month, we had the solar panel case? And they weren't in our handout either. Well, I did in mine, but it was a supplemental, but they were on the website. The, the current zoning code, or if you really aren't sure, you have to go on to the, the website to see what the current provisions are. And--
Thank you.
Disrespect to Shayla, but it's, it's really hard to keep up on the amendments. There's another whole slew of them now. They got passed at town meeting last Saturday. They now have to go to the state's attorney general. And at some point, the attorney general will make a determination whether they are allowable under the, I, I guess, under the state statutes and I think under our own bylaws, although I'm not sure about that latter point. But eventually, the attorney general will sign off on them. And at that point, they become effective. But it's, it's always long after the fact in the past, and people forget about it and everybody's doing everything else. So the best thing is to go check on the website if you have any concerns or can't find it. But it's a good point, Al. I have forgotten.
For Board of Appeals, only once a year we put those together. And I don't even remember when that is that they come out. I think it's usually sometime after the first of the year.
I don't remember. I, it says, no, January 2018. But you did give us some supplements at some point. But again, we have, the board revolves and it's always hard to remember to get the supplements which aren't in the book to the new members. So we do the best we can. But the attorneys are, when they have an attorney, they're pretty good at digging out the applicable regulations. Probably you, Shayla, or I don't know if they talked to Ray, but they know how to, the attorneys know how to dig them out and the applicants seem to come up with them too, sometimes.
Shayla, quick question. You said these books would be reprinted at the beginning of the year, is that right?
I'm not sure, that was my, my guess. I can, Mr. Ryan, if you send me an email again, like I said, once I get in during the day, I, I'm doing the work of two people right now, so it's hard to get off of the treadmill to get back to what we need. But if you send me an email to remind me to ask about that, I'll find out if we're getting new books in the, um, late, in the winter, early spring.
And given the budget constraints this year, I wouldn't be surprised if they were not reprinted again. But I, I think going to the website is workable, certainly. Okay, Shayla sent out meeting minutes for our last couple of meetings. Anyone have any comments on the July 29, 2020 minutes?
No, they look fine.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the July 29, 2020 minutes.
So moved.
So moved, who is that, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a second. Okay, Al seconds. All in favor of approving the July 29 minutes as written? Aye, okay, they are approved. Did anyone have any comments on the August 26, 2020 minutes? They look fine to me. I'll entertain a motion to approve those. So moved by Mr. Sullivan, a second, please. Mr. Murphy, all in favor of approving them as written?
Aye.
All right, they are unanimously approved. Did everybody get on okay tonight?
Yes.
It's a little easier, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know. I've got the little icon on my computer and clicking on it takes me nowhere. So I went back to the meeting agenda on our, our website page and clicked on the link and that put me in. It seemed to work best for me. Every month, I cannot get in just using the info and the, the byline and whatnot I, I have that Mary puts out for us. I don't know why, but I am not very adept at electronics. Although I did finally how to upload. We took the grandkids up. They were here for a visit last week, first time since we, first time we seen them since February, went up to Plymouth Plantation, give a little history on the 400th anniversary. And I forgot to dog on camera, so I used the one on the phone, which I never do. And then I had a heck of a time figuring out how to upload them into the computer. Oh, what a, what a work that turned out to be. I finally downloaded a free app to do it. And then I had a heck of a time getting the app to work. A nine-year-old would have had it done in like 20 seconds, but it took me hours. Anyway, does anyone have anything else?
I just want to remind everyone, we have an October meeting, but then, then there's a combo meeting for November and December. Does everybody remember that?
No.
No.
Because of the Wednesday of November is the night before Thanksgiving, the Wednesday that we would normally have our meeting. Nobody wants to do that. And the Wednesday of, um, the December, the Wednesday that we would use would either be from New Year's Eve or from Christmas. So we, uh, last year set it up that our combo meeting for November and, and December is December, um, the second? I'll send out a reminder, but just so that you know, when you start making your holiday plans. Not that everybody--
And I can't find it yet. And now that you say it, I, I do remember. And Shayla--
I didn't catch that date in December.
I'm sorry?
I didn't catch the date in December, you said?
Uh, you know, actually, I think it's the second, but I'll check, it could be the ninth. Uh, I, I think it could be the ninth. I, it's on the, um, the webpage, but I will send out, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't remember. I don't have the thing in front of me here. That's why I didn't, I don't remember anything. I have to look at the calendar. But we agreed next year, in 2021, we could either do a meeting, I forget when, in November, before, the week before Thanksgiving, I think, or do two in December. And I think it's kind of burdensome to do two in a month. So we're going to do the one early in November and then we'll have our December meeting. I thought that made a lot more sense.
I have to get going on that, um, this, in the next week or 10 days to get booked if we ever get back to the room. You have to book the room so early.